Order and our first order of business this evening will be a citizens forum. For the citizens forum, some rules are as follows. All meetings and work sessions shall be conducted by all participants with observance of fundamental rules of civility, including restraint in demeanor and respect for others and their views. Shouting, profanity, threats, personal attacks, or other similar actions are unacceptable. Should the chairman determine that a participant is likely to or has violated the foregoing conduct guidelines, the chairman may take appropriate action. So with that, I will open the citizens forum. Anyone present tonight has the opportunity to come forward and speak for three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone? Mr. Update, come on up.
I have a specialized seat. I'm not so sure where to get up and down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We've got to come to more meetings like this. I see some old friends here. Theresa Rosenberg and I worked together for a long time at Rappahannock Electric. I see some good faces, Ted Gore, I don't have to name every person that falls in here, but that's not what I'm here for. I'm here to two things. One is to tell you, hopefully this is the last time I'm going to have to. I don't need to bug you anymore about the road out at Pearl Sample and A.G. Richardson. I had a nice talk with Mr. Bennett this afternoon, and he shared some of the frustrations that you and all of us are sharing. I'm trying to get this done for the kids and their safety. So my only concern, and on top of that, is I'm afraid the longer it goes, somebody may say, well, you guys are not making any progress, and you might lose some funding and we have to start all over again. And I know John is quite aware of that, and I know you guys are too, because I know Paul and Gary, and a bunch of you have done a lot of work on this, and I'd hate to see it go down the tubes. So I won't spend any time, any more time on that. But I did want to make one more appearance to thank you guys. It's been a pleasure working with you, especially you three that are no longer with us. Brad, you've been, what, 40 years? Gary Deal just had a thought that I hadn't thought of. I'm finishing my 50th year on Board of Zoning Appeals. Between Brad and I, we've got 90 years of service to the county. That's a lot of time. Thank you, Brad. David, it's been nice working with you, sir. You've been very kind in helping on this. Susan, good luck to all of you, and I hope your replacements are as congenial and are concerned with the county like you guys were. And we thank you, and anything we can do to help move this project along, please let us know, because we all, I think every one of us, share the same concern about getting it done for the safety of the children and everybody at those two schools. So I thank you. I'm going to hobble on out of here. It's too hard to get back up after you sit down. So thank you all, have a good meeting, and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the citizens forum. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, at 4.01, the board will present a resolution to honor Carl Stafford upon his retirement.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to item four, special presentations. The board will recognize Mr. Carl Stafford, who has served as a senior extension agent in the county for 40 years, worked tirelessly with agriculture, with agribusinesses. Sometimes you're a little late on things, Carl, but we find a way to make all that work. So Mr. McLaren has a resolution to read, and Carl, if you would come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my honor to read this on behalf of the board. It's a resolution of appreciation to honor Carl Stafford upon his retirement. Whereas Carl Stafford is retiring after 40 years of faithful service to the Virginia Cooperative Extension as a senior extension agent for livestock and forages. And whereas Mr. Stafford began his service as an extension agent on August 1, 1985, and since that time, he has been an integral part of many important projects and successes at the Virginia Cooperative Extension office. And whereas throughout his distinguished career, Carl has been a trusted advisor, educator, and friend to farmers, colleagues, and community members alike. Whereas his leadership, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to agricultural excellence has left a lasting impact on Culpeper County and the surrounding region. And now therefore be it resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors hereby extends its heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to Carl Stafford for his 40 years of outstanding and dedicated service. And be it further resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors and the county staff wish through this resolution to express their sincere best wishes to Carl, and with good health, happiness, and continued success in all his future endeavors presented this second day of December 2025.
Thank you.
Turn my back on the board, but that's what I'll do. And it's the people of this community that made the work rewarding, and the ag community, Ted, and the farmers, Scott, and seeing children light up, their eyes light up, Sue, when you are doing something, and they go, I like this. And so that's what gets you going every day. Paula commented, boy, you just get up with a spring in your butt. So it was that people interaction, folks, that made me do it, and seeing things happen, and having an idea, and others make it real. And that's what happened at Carver. So it was an idea, but the people around me have actually made it real. So there's a lot of possibilities out there. Natalie, you and those two other young women that are in that picture that was in the College of Agriculture magazine was probably as good a highlight of my life experience in this work as anything else, to see those young ladies do something. And when they walked in the contest, the guy that was judging said, ooh, they must be good. And they were. And so they did well and represented the work. And I'm honored to have been here, and it's been, I've learned a lot, really, and had to, to keep up and get ahead of people that knew more than I did. Kristi has steered the office for more than 20 years, and it's valuable that you've been there, Kristi. So thank you very much for this honor and my privilege of receiving it from you.
So our next item on the agenda is the board will present a resolution in appreciation of Brad Rosenberg for 40 years of service. Oh, oh, excuse me. I am sorry. I jumped down. I'm sorry. Brad, this morning I called you a minister. I addressed you as Reverend Rosenberg. So from time to time, the board recognizes people in the county who have gone above and beyond the call of duty in giving their time and services to the county. And we present an award called the Culpeper Colonel Award. So tonight, we will be presenting two Culpeper Colonel Awards, and I would like to turn this over to our county administrator, Mr. McLaren, to read these into the record.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to do them one at a time and have them come up?
One at a time, yes.
The first one that we have that we're recognizing tonight is Peter McCarskey. Mr. McCarskey, I don't know if you want to stand up there, so.[625.37][625.37](applause) Whereas in every community in this nation, there are people with many walks of life who quietly strive to serve their fellow citizens by services voluntarily provided without fanfare or request for recognition or renuminate, whatever that word is.
Renumeration, yes.
Yeah, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Whereas in it is a sense of the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors that Culpeper County is very fortunate to have numerous citizens who serve their fellow citizens in a variety of ways, and it is being the further sense of this board that these individuals should, when possible, be recognized and lauded for their meritorious service. And whereas Peter McCarskey has had a distinguished and extremely meaningful career as a manager of the Regional Virginia Employment Commission Office for 27 years. He served 14 years on the Culpeper Human Services Board and served as chairman for four years. Whereas Peter McCarskey has served as co-treasurer on the Brandy Station Foundation and was instrumental in the restoration of the Graffiti House, one of the few dwellings in Culpeper County that was built before the American Civil War, to survive intact to this day. And whereas Peter McCarskey is a longtime owner of Branlet Farm, focusing on cattle farming in the county. Therefore, it is resolved the second day of December 2025 that this board finds that Peter McCarskey has gone above and beyond the call of citizenship and service to the Culpeper County and its residents. Further, he has poured his heart into all the things that are dear to him and to help make Culpeper a great place to live and serves as a true example of an upright and concerned citizen, who has touched and improved the lives of many. Be it further resolved that the board hereby designates Peter McCarskey as an honorary Culpeper Colonel, and hereby confers upon his name all honors pertinent herein to, and be it finally resolved that Colonel McCarskey is hereby recognized for his efforts and
Thank you.
I like it here. I'm on elevated.
I'm choosing you.
If you still want to be on that.
I just want to say, I was blown away when I got the letter the other day about this, because I just thought they were calling me about something else.[810.32][810.32](laughter) And, you know, and we paid our darn taxes the other day, too, so I was off the table. But, you know, there's a lot of people that I have worked with over the years, some of whom are sitting in the audience right now alongside my wonderful wife Peggy and part of my family sitting here. And she has really supported me over the years doing a lot of this stuff. And, you know, I just hope to stay around here. I see a lot of people in the audience I haven't seen for a while, and others that I just, I know you by face, and that's it, but I've seen you around Culpeper, and so I guess we just continue on about trying to make Culpeper the wonderful place it is and to keep, you know, doing the right thing. Thank you very much.[856.01][856.01](applause)
Okay, we have one more Colonel Award, and Mr. McLaren will read that in.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our next Culpeper Colonel Award is Norma K. Dunwoodie.[872.51][872.51](applause) Whereas Norma K. Dunwoodie began her career in Culpeper County as a finance clerk, and through dedication, diligence, and exceptional service, rose to became the first female county administrator in 1986 and served for seven years. And whereas Norma was voted Virginia County Administrator of the Year and one of three nominated for National County Administrator of the Year. And whereas during her tenure as county administrator, Norma guided the county through significant periods of growth and development, including the pressures associated with major subdivisions such as Three Flags, Claremont, and South Wales. And whereas Norma's innate ability to lead and participate, and her participation in a myriad of volunteer organizations, both locally and state, is nothing short of extraordinary, and laid the foundation for the county's longstanding financial stability by prioritizing sound fiscal management and planning, establishing practices that continue to benefit the community today. Whereas Norma was known for her innovative thinking, calming presence, and ability to foster strong relationships with both board members and county staff, earning widespread respect and admiration. And whereas her community volunteer work included being a board member on the hospital board for nine years, a charter member of SAFE, the homeless shelter, Camp Fantastic, Christmas Basket Program, Culpeper Animal Shelter, American Cancer Society, 4-H Program, weekly volunteer at the Free Clinic for 16 years, and was an executive director, Sunday School teacher, Presbyterian at the James Orphanage, youth tennis and swimming team at the Culpeper Wret Club, first female Rotary in Culpeper, first female Rotary president in Culpeper, and when not volunteering, she raced a 1967 Corvette with a big block 427 and a Ford G.[994.06][994.06](applause) And was known as the Quarter Mile Queen.[1001.01][1001.01](laughter) And whereas Norma's leadership, vision, and commitment to public service have left a lasting and positive impact on Culpeper County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Culpeper hereby recognize Norma K. Dunwoodie with the Culpeper Colonel and express their sincere gratitude for her exemplary service to the county. Be it further resolved, this board hereby designates Norma K. Dunwoodie as an honorary Culpeper Colonel, and hereby confers upon her name all honors pertinent herein to, and be it finally resolved that Colonel Dunwoodie is hereby recognized for her unwavering years of commitment to the county and thanked by a grateful board.[1044.58][1044.58](applause)
I just want to say that really, truly, the only thing I'm good at is to learn from myself, like, what it's like. I certainly had that opportunity. I'm very thankful for the opportunities I've had in this community because of the people. And so I share this with all who have served on my board, been volunteers, and probably everyone who's been plus thousand of the others. Thank you.
Norma, you may be the only person I know who is a queen and a Colonel.[1103.78][1103.78](laughter) Okay, we will move on now, and the board will present a resolution of appreciation to Brad Rosenberg for serving for 40 years on the Board of Supervisors. And if you would meet me around front.
On behalf of the county, this is a resolution of appreciation and recognition honoring Brad Rosenberg for 40 years of distinguished service as a Culpeper County Board of Supervisor member. Whereas Brad Rosenberg has devoted the last 40 years serving the citizens of the Jefferson District in Culpeper County as a dedicated member of the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors. And whereas Brad served as chairman and vice chairman of the board throughout his expansive career in the public service. Whereas Brad was first elected to the board in November 1985. Throughout his four decades of service, he has been steadfast advocate for responsible governance, community development, and the preservation of Culpeper County's unique character. And whereas during his tenure, Brad provided invaluable guidance, insight, and perspective while serving as chairman on various committees that have supported and enhanced the overall quality of life of citizens he proudly represented. And whereas Brad has earned the respect of his colleagues statewide and is revered by county staff and the community at large for his thoughtful leadership, integrity, institutional knowledge, and steadfast commitment to public service, and is fondly recognized for his boisterous and contagious laugh.[1220.58][1220.58](laughter) And whereas Brad's 40 years of service represents an extraordinary example of civic dedication and reflects his deep love for Culpeper County and its longstanding agricultural heritage. Now therefore be it resolved that Culpeper County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize and express their appreciation to Brad Rosenberg for his 40 exceptional years of service to the Jefferson District. And be it further resolved that this resolution is presented to Brad Rosenberg as a token of Brad's gratitude, of the board's gratitude, and hereby bestow their best wishes for his continued health and happiness in all his future endeavors, presented this second day,
Now that I'm on this side of the podium, I'd like to give you all a little hell while I'm up here, if you don't mind.[1284.15][1284.15](laughter) It's been an honor and a privilege to serve for the length of time I have, and I just feel very, very fortunate to have had that opportunity. I've enjoyed serving with you all. I'm going to miss serving with you. I'm going to miss the staff really a big time, but I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to be right out there in Jefferson, and if you ever need me for anything, just pick up the phone and call. And I thank you again very much for this.[1311.33][1311.33](applause)
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to read your resolution. Vice Chairman Deal is going to present it to you. Whereas David E. Dur was selected, it's a resolution of appreciation to honor David E. Dur. Whereas David E. Dur was elected to serve on the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors to represent the Cedar Mountain District and officially took office January 1, 2022. And whereas Dave served on the board for four years, having served as vice chairman in 2024 and serving as chairman in 2025. Whereas Dave has served on countless board subcommittees, including serving as chairman of personnel, chairman of building and grounds, the Agriculture and Forest Advisory Committee, Cable Commission, CPMT, library board, museum board, Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission, Human Services Board, public safety, the Town and County Interaction Committee, and Joint Capital Planning Committee. In addition, he has served as an E-Squared coach with Career Partners. And whereas during his tenure on the board, Dave played a role in significant initiatives that included the addition to the Culpeper Middle School, Culpeper County Community Pool Project, Culpeper Battlefield State Park, and approval of the recently new elementary school project. Whereas Dave has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to the community by advising on land preservation and agricultural issues, and by contributing significantly to a variety of civic, historic, and charitable organizations, such as the Culpeper Food Closet and Man of Ministry. And whereas Dave's hard work and unparalleled dedication, not just to the county, but to the staff as well, has touched the lives of many in our community in a positive way. And now therefore be it resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors extend their heartfelt gratitude for the service David E. Dur has given and will continue to give to their community, to this community. Be it further resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors wish through this resolution to recognize David Dur for his accomplishments, leadership, and steadfast commitment to the Cedar Mountain District during his tenure on the board, presented this second day of December 2025.[1454.01][1454.01](applause)
So it's been a long time since I've stood on this side of the microphone. It's a little different. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve on this board. There's some people here in the audience tonight that came not because of this, but for other reasons. Ted Gore, kind of a mentor of mine at the Co-op. Norma, the first organization I was involved with in Culpeper was The Chamber, and you were the leader, and you sort of brought me around and got me involved. That was a great thing. Thank you. I appreciate that. So a lot of good people in Culpeper, great people to work with on the board. I appreciate it. I've enjoyed the relationship. I will miss the staff as well as the board, and thank you very much.[1513.87][1513.87](applause)
Resolution of appreciation to honor Supervisor Susan L. Gugino. Whereas Susan Gugino was elected to serve on the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors in November of 2021 as a Stevensburg District representative and officially took office January 1, 2022. Whereas Susan served the citizens of the Stevensburg District for four years and was persistent in balancing growth and preserving working farms and the rural character of Stevensburg. And whereas Susan set out to improve agricultural policies and worked diligently to continue the rural preservation of the Stevensburg District, and during her tenure, she played a major role in many significant actions. Perhaps most importantly, she worked to shape the long-term economic and environmental trajectory of Culpeper. And whereas Susan has served on countless board subcommittees such as Public Works, the Agriculture and Forest Advisory Committee, the Airport Advisory Committee, Extension Leadership Council, chairman of Rules, chairman of the Town and County Interaction Committee, and the Rappahannock Rapidan Regional Commission. And whereas her hard work and unparalleled dedication to not only the county, but to county staff has been unmatched, as she's touched the lives of many in our community in a positive way. And now therefore be it resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors extends its heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for the service Susan has given and continues to give this community. And be it further resolved that the Culpeper County Board of Supervisors wish through this resolution to recognize Susan Gugino for all that she has contributed and accomplished during her term as Culpeper County Board Member, presented this second day of December
I have been on this side of the podium recently when we did the whole poultry farming, but I want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to represent Culpeper's largest district landmass-wise. It is gorgeous. I love it. We made it a home. We planted roots, and I really appreciated everybody's welcoming of me here in the agricultural community, on the board. The staff is wonderful. The board was great to work with. So I appreciate it. I enjoyed it, and thank you.[1683.01][1683.01](applause)
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we will come back and look at John, are you ready? You're good? Okay, Peter, Mr. McCarskey, Colonel McCarskey. He is not listening to me.[1763.45][1763.45](laughter) All right, our next order of business is Planning Commission Business and Public Hearings. The first item on this agenda is a request by Rob and Rosemary Edwards, Autumn Valley Farm, for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of agritourism event facility. And I will turn this over to Mr. Drumheller to present.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll start the case by reading the recommendation letter from the Planning Commission. The Board of Supervisors will con- The Board of Supervisors will consider a request by Rob and Rosemary Edwards, Autumn Valley Farm, for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an agritourism event facility per Article Three, Section three dash two dash two point one B, agritourism in the instance where there is a potential substantial impact on the health, self, safety, and general welfare of the public. Also, Section three dash two, two point four banquet facilities, and in general conformance with Article seventeen, conditional use permits of the zoning ordinance. The property is zoned RA, rural area, and is located along Store Road in the Salem Magisterial District. It's found on Tax Map forty-nine, parcels twenty-one, twenty-one D one, and twenty-one D two. The case was considered by the planning commission after proper advertising and public hearing held on Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five. The planning commission found the request to be in conformance, in general conformance with Article seventeen, conditional use permits of the zoning ordinance. Upon motion duly carried, the planning commission recommends to the Board of Supervisors by a five to four vote that the proposed use permit be approved with the following conditions. And they numbered nine, Mr. Chairman, if you'll bear with me. Number one, venue entrances at store and monitor roads shall be upgraded to meet VDOT standards for moderate commercial, moderate volume commercial entrance. Number two, all site activities shall be subject to and comply with Culpeper County Code, Chapter ten A, nuisances, the noise ordinance. Number three, any use of temporary portage on facilities shall be in accordance with Virginia Department of Health requirements and provided by licensed carriers or sewage handlers. Number four, food services that are provided on-site shall be permitted through the Virginia Department of Health. Number five, site lighting shall be in conformance with Appendix A, Article thirty-two, outdoor lighting standards. The barn, as permitted, as a permitted banquet facility, shall be allowed to host a licensed Virginia farm winery off-site tasting room in accordance with the Virginia ABC regulations. Number seven, any intermittent stream channel, pond, or wetland on the property shall provide a non-disturbed vegetative buffer of thirty-five feet as measured from the top of stream bank or edge of water. Number eight, the existing private gravel access road, the portion of Store Road extended, shall be maintained as it, at its current condition. And number nine, no publicly attended site activities shall occur prior to nine AM. Sincerely, Sanford Reeves, Jr. If you'll bear with me, with me, Mr. Chairman, on the board that Kim has up, Pam's provided this map to us, the subject parcels, there's three of them. They're approximately thirty acres in size. The applicant does own land to the south, the RA land to the south and east, or his family does. I would call your attention to the northeast. There's, in yellow there, that's R one, residential occupied zoning district. Store Road comes in there off of South Merrimack Road. It should be noted that the larger events, or not the larger events, but, but the applicant has, has listed there's, he wants to have up to eighty events annually, numbering two-hundred-and-ninety-six indoor participants, and forty-five events that could average six-hundred-and-fifty participants. He has proposed that in acknowledgement of that number of cars over the course of a day, if, if there is an issue, he does control an exit out to Monitor Road, which is the neighborhood that exits out to twenty-nine, and it would become one-way traffic if, if the crowds got to a certain point. Can you look at the area? The applicant is present, and I can take questions if you'd like with this application. But I do want to share that the, the structure there that's shown next to the gravel is the quote barn in question, and that barn has been cited by the building official some months ago, you know, under a violation of USBC Building Code. It was originally permitted under an ag use structure permit. The building official found that the primary use was not, you know, a barn, and was indeed more like a banquet facility. So this, this is a, you know, an effort to work through that issue by the applicant and, and bring that site into compliance under the banquet facility. Agritourism events that occur on this property currently include a corn maze, and some of the agritourism events would be by right without substantial impact. However, staff felt that some of, described in the packet, some of the events would occur at night and include lights, movies, things like that, ending as late at eleven PM. So that presents in, in staff's mind a potential for substantial impact to the neighborhood. And that portion of the, of the agritourism, you know, you do have the ability to regulate. So with that, I'll, I'll open the floor to any questions you may have. And I know the applicant is present, and there is a presentation he'd like to give you.
Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question for staff. Neil, when, unlike a rezoning, when we do a conditional use permit, are there letters or anything sent out to the neighbors on this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and letters were sent to many of the neighbors. I think we did, the term might be overkill, and then sent to all the residential neighbors.
Definitely the ones that are on the adjacent property line.
They did indeed receive letters, or it was mailed first class and not, not return receipt.
Ms. Gugino.
So with this, this is two conditional use permits.
It's one, but he's, he's under two code sections. So in the A one zoning district, banquet facilities, country ends is, is one. And then agritourism with a potential for substantial impact to those in the neighborhood is, is another one. So he's, he's doing both under general conformance with Article seventeen, and I don't need to remind you all, you know, what the, what the tenants are of issuance under seventeen, unless I do.
Is this typically how we would do a multifaceted conditional use permit? We wouldn't do one for the banquet facility and one for the agritourism? Because I think they would have different considerations.
They do. I mean, they're kind of bundled together under the one umbrella. So, I mean, I, perhaps that's at your discretion as to whether you want to separate those. I'm, you know, this is how we, we thought it was best to bring it forward together.
Okay, at this point, it is one. They are inclusive of everything.
Yes. He's applying for both code sections.
Other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to come forward and give us a presentation? Please come up, introduce yourself, and tell us about your project.
I'm Rob Edwards. I bought the property about twenty-three years ago. Looks pretty much the same as it did then. I wanted to come here and live and have my kids live, and we're gonna be getting my first, my, actually kid number two, putting in for a building permit for his house. He has had a, his daughter, so I've got a grandkid. So we're, we're starting a trend. I don't know what to do with it.
Yes, you just push that behind.
Okay. All right. I did this last month for the planning commission, so don't really know what all I need to say, but we, this is the farm. This is my entrance. The big building up on the right-hand side is where I built the barn. My house is actually behind the blue tractor to the left. If you just go down that gravel road, I'm in there. This was the corn maze that we had. It's our first annual. So I think there was a lot of concern about, a lot of interruption in the community. Quite honestly, I didn't know what I was gonna get, so I kind of figured I'd throw it out there and see what worked. We had a lot of, my Facebook advertising actually turned out, we had a lot of grandparents looking for things to do with the grandkids. So that was actually the biggest draw that I had, which was interesting, because I didn't see that one coming. But it was a success, and we're gonna do it again next year. This is what it looks like when there's, I guess, a activity with about seventy-five cars, and there's the corn maze in the back. That was about eight acres this year. I'm gonna rotate it and run the maze a little closer to the barn. Not, not for any reason other than just to kind of change it up and give the fields a chance to rest. That was one of the programs we had for the kids, put a scavenger hunt out there for them. That was a big success. Actually, a lot of the parents got, got into that one. We had some schools out and they supported barn, or barn owl workshop, and I'm learning about the farm. We have a lot of issues with the farm, a lot of challenges. One of the biggest ones I have right now is coyotes. It's tearing everything I have up. And so I had this idea that barn owls were gonna be a solution, and I'd like to bring them in, kind of maybe go the natural way, but I think I might have to do a little direct action, because the other night I counted six in one hour on my thermal, and it's just, they're, they're killing my cats, they're going after livestock, they're going after a lot, a lot of animals. They, they killed a clutch of six geese that were down by my island, and causes us a little distress. Yeah, inside the, when I was a kid, I had a, my dad ran a Parks and Recreation Department for a little locality in Philadelphia, and he, I remember at Easter, if there was ever rain, we'd wind upside the gymnasium, and he'd bring all the straw bales in, let us have it. So every kid under eight, so that's what we're doing. You'll be seeing that next spring. That's with the barn. It's actually one of the uses I had set up for it. That's what it looks like when there's people and tables for events. That was actually a promotional event there. We didn't have it, Neil talked about that letter. We never actually had any events prior to the letter. We got this letter saying we were in violation of something. We never did anything in it, but this was the, might have been what triggered. Yeah, I think this was the event that actually triggered the letter, because it came the day after we did the event. That's the car, they're up at the bar. They're Class A outfit, and I, I, I met with the owner, and I said, we have to do something together. He liked, he likes, sorry, he's, he's very mature, and he, he, he wants to bring, he wants to bring, I don't want a winery here, but I do like the agricultural side. So I invited him out and Julian, who makes his wine, to see about expanding. They're pretty much out of dirt, so they're gonna go ahead and start looking at our place in six, seven, eight years out. They're studying soils now, but they're looking to lay that in, so hopefully I can participate on the grape side. I do not want to participate on the winery side. That was part of a promotional we had. It's kind of a master plan, but it's, it's very evolving. It moves around. I might even have to put the corn maze off this thirty-acre tract to my twenty-acre tract to the south. We had a lot of problems with, we, we can't grow much. Everything from the center ridge over, we lost almost all the crops because of the deer, and I can't control them. I've got, it's hard to make any money on the agricultural side, to be honest with you. You have, if you could blend in people and get some things going, we can do it. Where I have the silo, that's one of two or three areas I have considered for doing gardens. I'm, I'm interested in the French-English gardens. The other side is right outside the barn, and actually the other third site is, can you see in the picture where there's a brown spot? It's, it's not on those three acres, it's on that twenty acres. That's actually where we put a bunch of fertilizer in it. It looks like it killed the ground, and it did. But that's how we get the fertilizer, dump it, and then load up the tractor and go around fertilize the fields. Just above that, there's a high hill, and that's an area where, I was talking to Kathy who lives in that house right there. It's, it'd be a great place to put gardens. I want to get into the wildflowers and get into the drying aspects of it. I have the facilities to dry it. I can do that. It's sort of designed as a multi-use. So we're evolving our program all the time. That's it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes, sir. You said that promotion there. You've been holding weddings at this facility for twenty years?
No, the, on the farm, we've done it for folks, just they'll throw a tent and have weddings. I never did it for commercial reasons, but I wasn't sixty years old either, so. Yeah, we, so we let them do that. But in the barn, we've had two weddings. We've had some occasional weddings, local folks.
Other questions? Mr. Bates.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Edwards, so do you live on the property?
Yes, sir.
And is that house on that acreage, or is it in off of the subdivision?
It's on the, it's on the property. It's not on that thirty acres. It's just on the, I have about one hundred and thirty-five. I gave some to the kids, so I'll probably end up at one hundred and twenty-five.
What was it, what's the address? Is there, is there a separate nine-one-one address?
There is. It's ninety-five twenty-one Store Road. It's, you can see that, you can see my house from the barn. I, I, I like to be able to keep an eye on things, so I can see it. We can see each other.
Okay. Because, I mean, one of my biggest concerns, and this isn't the first time we've been, had this type of application come before the board. And as Mr. Drumheller had, had mentioned, when you start adding lights, nighttime activities, amplified music, the board is well aware that is a recipe for problems going down the road. And when I say that, you may have neighbors that are not gonna say a word. They want to be good neighbors until they're not good neighbors. Until it's on a Friday night or a Thursday night, and the music's playing at ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night, and I understand the application says it won't go past nine o'clock, and it won't start before nine o'clock. But when the complaints start coming in, they start coming in, and we have, this board has been down that road before. And that is a, a big concern. I know you've got a sheet here that's got, looks like approximately thirty-nine or forty signatures on it, that, that's with your application, the submittals. But on those, on those signatures, what I was, what I've noticed, it looks like there's only about five or six of them that are adjacent property owners that would be directly affected should that noise and light start bothering people. And you may, you know, people will say, well, you know, they, they don't think it's a problem right now, but if those people sell that house and new people move in, you know, they're moving out into a rural area, open space, farmland, they moved out that way because of they want quiet, peace and quiet. So when we start talking about an agritourism activity, I think that's really stepping outside the bounds, and I know that's what the conditional use permit's for. But I am for one, and not in a position that I'm gonna support going down the road of nighttime activities and lights and that sort of thing. So again, I was hoping to see more of the adjacent property owners on here, more than what you've got. A lot of them, you know, have, may have signed this saying, hey, it's a great venue, we've enjoyed it, we love it. And I think the stuff that you're planning to do with the flowers and the, and the corn maze, that's awesome. It's a great, you know, it's a great thing, but outside of that, I'm not, I'm not gonna be able to support that.
Other questions? Supervisor Lee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Edwards, you had mentioned in the application having, I think it's forty-five events per year, averaging six-hundred-and-fifty participants. What, so what types of events would, would those be?
Well, I think for that, I mean, we had that many, or almost that many with the corn maze and vents. We didn't have that many people yet. We're first year in, so if it grows, then I would expect that to be the one. The other would be the Easter program that we want to put on. And then the third might be, you know, I signed up for the Parks and Recreation Department there, starting on Monday, I think. It's the Twinkle Tour, so I signed up for that. So we're, we're enrolled in that. We might see that kind of, I don't know. I don't know what, it's their second annual, so I wanted to support that. And it's in line with what I wanted to do on the farm. I had to kind of drag the wife along with that, but yeah, she's like, I always have to clean up and set up and everything, I hear. But no, it's just for the kids. I mean, it's, it's good stuff. It's all clean. All this is clean. When I, when I built this building, I built it multi-use, because I sat with Neil four years ago about all this, and it was before, I guess, what was that one venue that blew up on you guys and you were having to? what was that one venue that blew up on you guys and you were having to? I can't, it was a, a barn. I don't know, some barn. Anyway, uh, when I was trying to lay this out, I was trying to lay it out so I can do many things. And that's, uh, I didn't, I didn't know I was going to run into this situation, but when I built it, I built the barn very, very well. I did it so the doors orient towards my house. They don't orient towards my neighbor's house. The, you, you can't hear, if you're, got the music all the way up, you can be in the parking lot and you can barely hear the music because I have it so well insulated. I didn't just insulate the walls. I insulated the ceilings, the floors. I did, I, I did multi-levels of construction on the barn itself with wings. All those wings are also insulated. So the sound just doesn't go to where, you know, I don't want to go to my neighbors. I know all my neighbors. Nat Medina, he's right on the corner. Uh, Sherry and her husband are in the, in the audience tonight. Nat couldn't make it again tonight. Aubrey, he actually plays music for me. He's my closest neighbor. He's actually Aubrey Drikers. His parents sold him the house a few years ago. Aubrey, Aubrey's parents, I met them when I first moved in in 2003. John passed and his mom moved to, um, to Florida, so he's playing the music there. So he, he supports it. Kathy's on the corner. She walks the dog every day. So I know my neighbors. Um, some of them, they work. I think Nat's working. He's out of town, so he can't make this meeting, but, I did what I could with the, with the signatures and getting the community support, but, um, I think the fellow that wrote the letter from Soil Conservation, I invited him and his wife out. She was reluctant at first, but she came out and then when she came out of the maze, she had a big smile on her face and the music and the lights and all the things that were going on, time didn't bother her because I think they might have even had a flashlight too. So everybody was pretty much participating. I regulate. You know, I walk around. I went on Jan Court. I would go on, whenever there's an event, I walk around the area. I always make sure that things are in check. The biggest probably issue I have is the voice of children. I didn't realize the voice of children could travel so far. It was one thing I didn't expect, but they like to run around and play outside and that was actually the, that was the one that, that got me. I didn't see that coming. But other than that, the noise in the building, um, you don't get it. The, the music that we play, uh, we had a DJ outside. That was actually Aubrey. He was there. Um, and, and we keep it low key and it's more to support things in the background. So it's not sitting there trying to be a rock concert. It's not trying to blare out and annoy the neighbors. So what, what we, we wanted definitely make sure we're within the tolerance of the noise ordinance, but I want to exceed that. I don't really want to be there to be a disruptor, so.
So when you had the 650, so you've had events with that many people?
I haven't had, not, not that, 100 so far is my max, but I'm just starting out.
Right. So you're just kind of planning if you had that many people?
But I wanted to test, like for instance, the, the outdoor music. When Aubrey next door came over to play, I, I oriented him so it would cut across the farm and, and it was, it was good because we worked on how much, how much he can, where he can set his music, so it's enjoyable for us, but not blaring all over. So that, that's kind of how I do it. It's not, you know, I'm pretty considerate of my neighbors.
Right.
They've been good to me too, so.
So the, the, the traffic plan where, uh, the, if, if, if there were too many cars to just go in and out of the main entrance, that traffic plan where they would go through your property to, I forget the name, what's the name of the road?
Monitor.
I'm sorry?
Monitor.
Monitor Road, so that actually hasn't happened yet. You haven't had actually cars using Monitor Road because that's, that's another residential area back up there to, to get off of 29.
So, so think, think like this, right? My, I don't have a, a start date, like a start time. My, everyone filtered in over the hours of a whole day. So 650 people, even if we did that, floating in over 11 hours is 60 cars. That's not a whole lot. It doesn't create a lot of, it, I mean, I have more traffic from Amazon coming up and down my driveway. So if we have, if we have that many and it becomes problematic, because let's say they cluster. I have a back door. I can get them out that way. So it, it, it gives me a chance to regulate, yeah, self-regulate it, that's all. And that's, that's all, that's what I was looking to do. It wasn't to try and create an inconvenience to the folks on Monitor. It just happens to be I have another way and I have roads built through the property that makes it work.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Edwards, you mentioned the Soil and Water Conservation was out. In their letter in this packet, it states that they believe there will be some soil or some runoff issues that will affect the houses in White Shop Estates. Tell me what that is and how you've addressed it.
Well, we have a significant buffer between both properties and our, our, our farm and that property. It hasn't changed, but we did have a change about, it was about four months ago. We had a, a tree on a property line and it, it got hit by lightning, so it made a big gap. So I got, I had the tree removed and went ahead and replanted and I planted, just to, just to reconstitute the, the buffer we had. We had a good 30 foot thick buffer of trees and shrubs and this tree was the biggest one, of course, and the most prettiest tree. And it got hit and, um, it, it did some damage, but other than that, um, we, we, we don't shed water into that area, other than what's been going on now for the last, ever since I bought the farm.
So I'll, I'll read to you from the letter. "The proposed improvements appear to have stormwater impact on the adjacent residential development of White Shop Estates. The applicant should propose stormwater management to address the impact to these neighbors. How have you addressed this?"
I don't know how we've done that. I, I, the, the, the driveway's been there since 2004. Uh, it's the same gravel driveway. The driveway goes to the same culvert which, um, everyone uses for the creek that goes through as a creek. If you look in the yellow, there's a little stream that runs down from 29. It runs through all the backyards of the properties and it runs through. Mine just goes into the same, the same stream. It always has. I haven't done anything new. I didn't build anything that would cause that. The, the water sheds the same direction. Did I answer the question right?
It, it does not address what this letter says.
Sometimes we have stupid people at Soil Water Conservation.
Okay. That stupid person was fine.
I would not necessarily agree with that Supervisor Underwood.
I take issue with that comment.
I'll take issue as well.
I'm, I'm just saying that was part of this packet that was presented and I would have hoped you had a, a response to it. That was more than a tree was hit by lightning.
No, I was just telling you, the only thing that's changed since 2004 is that the water that's there on that farm still goes to the same places it always has. So I don't know, my road's been there since 2004 when I built it. I don't know what, I mean...
Could the, could the barn have something to do with that?
No. The, the water's still the same. It goes to the same place. There's no new, I didn't put in new culverts or anything. There was no need to. It still rolls to the same, it, it still sheds to the same place it, it did before.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So you said you built the barn four years ago?
About so, yeah.
And that so, what was, when you built the barn, was it to be used for agriculture purposes?
Yes, that and, and also eventually events because it takes time and money to build everything. So we worked that, we worked to that direction. So.
Okay, but you only had two weddings in that and that vendor show?
Right, because we didn't, we didn't bring, we didn't get to this level until about five months ago.
Okay.
So even though we started it four years ago, um, it wouldn't have...
And so in your numbers and stuff, you're talking about 125 events a year. Between the 80 occasional private events, which 80 in a year to me, it doesn't seem very occasional. And then special events, 45 of those. And you said sometimes those could overlap? So you could have a possibility of over 1,000 people coming into your farm at any given point?
Well, the...
And over 300 vehicles, which I saw parking on there, but how weather conditions, seasons, how was that going to be accommodated?
Sure. So the corn maze was 45 events.
So you're counting each day as?
That's what, because I didn't know how else to count it. So when the kids came for the school, that was concurrent with the corn maze. So I had two events, but the kids had 16 kids from the school.
Right.
And then we had 32 people in the corn maze that day. So we had, so there are two events, but could it get there? I guess it could get there. I mean, I don't know. Um...
Because it's just a significant number of cars coming in this, these roads, even if it is over a time. I mean, 60 cars an hour, that's a car every minute going past a lot of people's driveways. And then if you add it at night, then you have a lot of headlights. You have a lot of this traffic just consistently flowing. And here I saw that you would start no earlier than 7:00 AM. I saw the conditions said you couldn't start before nine. And then you're not ending until 10 or 11 at night. And so the duration of the time period is concerning, the start time is concerning. Do you have plans to make those, as VDOT asks, to commercial entrances? To expand those, to ensure that they can handle that amount of traffic?
Yeah, they're, they're right now already approved. I know that the one on Monitor Road was approved for commercial, uh, no, not commercial. It was low, low volume. Can't remember the name they used. It was, it was, it was with a big radius. I'm not a VDOT guy. It was, it was a big radius they had there. The only thing I needed to do was pave it. Basic or tar and chip it. So that was my plan there. And then Store Road, that's got really good line of sight. I mean, it's, there's no issues there. The speed limit's 25 and I think you can see 600 feet. And I didn't, I, I, I want to pave it, but I think the intent of the paving was to try to keep the, the gravel and such off the road, off of the rest of Store Road. And I noticed that it actually, I, I would need to pave a little bit more and I think the book says 30 feet, but I think I need to go more like 50 or 60 because we tend to drag out the gravel or whatever, so. But my plan was to go 250 feet up to my, um, my gate anyway with tar and chip, so.
Yeah, because this said that it would require moderate volume commercial entrances and this would require upgrades at both locations to include increased radii and width. So you have the plan to, or have already increased the radii and width of those entrances?
Yeah, Jimmy Trelle helped me with that one three years ago, um, on, on Monitor Road.
If that was three years ago, why are they saying this in August of 2025 that they need to be upgraded?
I didn't put in the asphalt. I didn't, I didn't put the asphalt in. I have the radiuses there. They were, um, are they asking for commercial entrances or not?
The road was not asphalted three years ago. The road was asphalted this summer. The actual state road, Store Road, was not asphalted.
That's true. They just asphalted our roads. Uh, both Monitor and Store Road got asphalted about three or four months ago.
Are there other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Oh, excuse me.
You mentioned here, you, you mentioned, uh, chip, asphalt and chip. But the requirement of VDOT says, "Commercial entrances, turn lanes shall be asphalt, concrete or paved." Is the construction comparable to the pavement of the adjacent roadway, which is asphalt?
It's asphalt now. It was tar and chipped a year ago, um, and then they came in this year and I think it was after I did all this paperwork, they asphalted it. I didn't.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Please have a seat. Okay, this item requires a public hearing and I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come forward to speak? Please come up to the podium. Tell us your name and magisterial district.
I'm Anthony Hudson. I assume I'm Salem. I don't know what my magisterial district is, but I live on an adjacent property. A little trapezoid one up there off Hampton Lane, which also borders Monitor and all of that stuff. And I can just say, discussions I've had with Rob, I've been more than thankful. I walk my dogs through that area all the time. It's one of the best things of my life is walking my dogs early in the morning after my stressful day because I'm an environmental health and safety manager for a company that deals with hazardous materials. So I have all kinds of stuff to deal with and walking there, um, and him allowing me to walk through there and seeing the views, you know, and I think those are things that I would hate to see go away. I know we're talking, you know, uh, stormwater permitting and stuff like that. I can tell you right now from a commercial side as a business, I file stormwater permits for my business. That barn right there would be considered a no exposure permit based off what I file with the state for my businesses. Rob's not doing any maintenance outside that barn of vehicles. He's not storing any chemicals, anything outside that's filed, no exposure. The gravel, so he puts some gravel down instead of farm dirt. It's going to be less dirt that runs off from gravel being there than it's going to be open dirt when he's waiting for his plants to grow. Now, as far as you can't tell it from there, that's an elevated position. The creek runs down. The creek separates all of those. Most of that from that barn is running back towards Rob's property across that field. Okay? So that's a lot of area to cover for the water. That's just my opinion based off where I come from in this world of what I deal with on a daily basis. But I can tell you from spending some time with Rob, talking to Rob, Rob is not talking about growing this into some large thing and I have a problem with, we keep saying, "Commercial entrances" here. There are plenty of venues that we've been to. There's one on the other side of 29 down the road that I'm pretty sure that entrance going into it is not a commercial entrance. You know, based on my experience as a health and safety person, I have issues with the blindside and it's coming out of that one. These are coming out into a limited resource. We have plenty of traffic. As far as noise goes, we live, like I said, we back up. We're going to hear from what's on that barn because that barn sits on a hill and we kind of goes down to our house. I hear more from the co-op and we have the tractor pulls. I hear the engines all the time. I don't hear the music from Rob's barn. I know there's concerns about some of the lights and stuff along those lines. But then again, when you look at when most of the agribusiness is going to happen, it's during the summer. The sun's not setting until 9, 9:30 at night anyway. So you're not talking about it being like it is now from 5 o'clock till 11 o'clock at night with all these additional lights. You're looking at the sun and all of that, you know, and finally just summing it up, I, I think it's important we keep some of this stuff around. You know, Rob talks about having the kids there, the schools, and he's not just talking in public schools, the private schools, you know, the homeschoolers, the groups along those lines. Because I think it's important, I grew up in a rural county and I'm watching the farms in a rural county down in Franklin County where we spent most of our life. People aren't doing anything with them and they're turning in the housing developments. And people are losing touch with some of this stuff of how do you get your food? What goes into all of this stuff? That you need to also factor into making decisions when stuff's, decisions are made about things. How do you get that food? It does just come from the supermarket. People have to put work into it. That's my two cents for what I got.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to come forward? Is there anyone? Mr. Haight, come on up. And I did not say this before, but please limit your comments to three minutes. And I know you know that, Mr. Haight.
Why did you say that when I walked up?
Because I forgot to say it the first time.
It's, it's way shorter than that. Um, I didn't speak at the citizen forum, but I, I too appreciate everything that everyone has done. Especially Brad, 40 years. That's, that's, you know, that's a couple lifetimes, but they definitely want to appreciate everything you did for us, Brad. As was David and Susan, my supervisor. Don H. Stephensburg. The same concerns that you have had with this application is the same concerns you had with the rodeo a couple of weeks ago and they are exactly the same. Absolutely no difference. You all voted seven to zero to deny the rodeo application. There are absolutely no differences, none whatsoever, so ever. There are absolutely no differences, none whatsoever. The only difference is, is that this applicant has been cited by the Building Department with a citation. I believe it's because they were operating without the proper zoning and building permits. I believe they are trying to run a banquet venue claiming it is a hay barn. I'm always amazed when outsiders come here and think the board of supervisors are stupid. They think you can pull the wool over your eyes and we not see what they're trying to do. Nobody spends hundreds of thousands of dollars on a project and aren't aware of the rules and regulations that are required to follow. Yes, we want agriturism here in Culpeper because we strive to maintain our rural character. But you must, but we want people to do the correct thing, follow the rules and regulations in building, in building large structures without permits. It's not what we want. Our rules and regulations apply to everyone. Some people think the rules and regulations only apply to a few. I believe this applicant has, has been in violation according to the Building and Zoning Department. We can't have two sets of rules depending on who the applicant is. Brad is a lifetime farmer here in Culpeper, and I want to ask him, how many hay barns have you seen like this? This quote-unquote hay barn has a commercial bar in it. When have you ever seen a barn with a commercial bar? We want agriturism here, but we don't, but we want everyone to follow the rules and regulations. When have you ever seen a hay barn with chandeliers and drywall? Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak? Anyone else? Okay, we will close the public hearing and open this up for discussion or questions by the board. Mr. Underwood.
I visited the property. And in terms of comments of how this compares to what was a couple of months ago, I'd say a few things. One, a couple of months ago, we had public feedback was, that was different than what we receive today. Today, of those that are in the district, we had one person speak and he spoke in behalf, in favor of the application. In terms of the issues of ingress and egress, the one a couple of months ago had constraints that were recognized by the member of that district and seemed very legitimate. This is on a state road that was asphalted this summer, that is located less than three hundred yards from Highway twenty-nine, our primary arterial. I've talked to the applicant. I've, I own property within a half mile of this. I know a lot of the neighbors. Therefore, I'm going to make the motion that we follow the Planning Commission and staff's recommendation and approve case number U-2256-25-1 with the conditions that were outlined.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? I believe your motion dies without a second.
I'll make another motion. I'll make a motion that we delay this until the January meeting.
Is there a second?
How about a table? That doesn't require that, does it?
Just going by Robert's rules. Mr. Bennett?
We have a motion, a table, and a second, and a affirmative vote.
Mr. Bates?
I'd just like to make a comment in response to Supervisor Underwood. And I agree, they're sitting the same as what we talked about a couple of months ago. But there are a lot of different instances, I mean, a lot of different circumstances that don't make this a very appealing application. The housing density two months ago wasn't nearly what we're dealing with here. The road situation two months ago was horrendous. You can't pass two pickups on that road without knocking mirrors. Granted, you've got a, a road, Mary Mac Road, Store Road, which is, yes, a, a state road in a better shape than, I think it's Stone, was it Stone Road? Stone Road. But the, the density, and you know, you were on the board years back in Brandy, and, and noise and lights, what, you know, what neighbors are there today? I can tell you, if, they might be fine with it until the consistency of it continues and it gets old. They sell the house, a new applicant, I mean, a new homeowner moves in expecting it to be rural or five-acre lots or whatever the case may be, houses, whatever, they're not going to be listening to loud music and lights at eleven o'clock at night. I am all about whatever farmers can do to keep farming. But when we start stepping outside of the realms of what agriturism, what state code, the, the definition of agriturism states, you know, I made a comment this afternoon, you grew up on a farm, I grew up on a farm. I don't think you want to have amplified music around cattle or any type of livestock. And that said, this, this just isn't a good fit. And, you know, as much as I would like to say, yeah, we, you know, I'd go along with this, but I, my heart tells me I'm not going to be able to support it. And it's just, and, and we are not talking the same thing. There, there are situations in, in both applications that justify denial. And that's how I feel about it.
Ms. Cagino?
Yeah, so this is much like Supervisor Bates said, much higher density. And what troubles me even more is the fact that the RA, which is supposed to be agriculture, is actually more dense in housing than the R1, which is on the other side. And it's, when you have three hundred cars go by your driveway as people are leaving from whether it's a nightly corn maze and a wedding or whatnot, and you're doing that eighty times a year, that gets old. And it's not neighborly, yes. The farm looks like it does now, but when you put in thirty acres of corn maze, ten acres of parking, and people constantly coming in and out, I, I just don't see how that fits with the residential and rural aspect of this area, which is going to continue to increase in houses all around it based on zonings and what it's actually zoned for now and how the lots are divided up currently and how they could be divided up in the future. So, I mean, I'll move to deny the special use permit, case number U-2256-251, on the findings that the SUP requested for the banquet facility. Right now, the improvements, it's not a barn for agriculture use. It was built for a multipurpose to begin with and is in conflict with the residential zoning uses around it with the noise congestion, indoor/outdoor music. The SUP will not meet the required findings for Appendix A, Article seventeen use permits, A through C, and that its uses as a banquet facility, like we said, is inconsistent with the adjoining residential nature.